What's the audio? All right. Good morning, everyone. It's eight thirty-two on Tuesday, March twenty-second. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectment of the Town of New Canaan. And I'm on remotely. Kathleen Nicker in the town hall meeting room. And before we start our agenda, we have two items to add to the agenda. I think you have them on your desks. I move we add the Elm Street bump outs and the sidewalk bricks to the agenda. Second?
Second here.
All in favor? Okay. First item on the agenda is the minutes from the last meeting on March eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Any comments or corrections on the minutes?
I shared my, there's a typo and I shared that with Pam already. So she has that.
That correction, I move we approve the minutes. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectment on the agenda topic schedule for review and revoke. Anyone present in the meeting room?
No.
Since this is, since this is a hybrid meeting, we will take comments by email as well, sent to B O S distribution at newcanac t dot gov. And we will read them in the course of before the end of the meeting. So Pam will be watching for comments. Next item on the agenda is the Director of Fire Services. Actually, thought we did this already, but I guess not. Is Jack and?
Yes, they're all present.
Everyone's present.
Cheryl, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
So we would like to ask for approval to move Al Bassi. He started as the Assistant Chief in September of twenty-one. Then he was moved to the interim chief of the fire department. And now we would like to move him to the chief of the fire department and director of fire services. I think you have all worked closely with Albie over the past six months. He has been a tremendous asset to the town, to the fire department, and I am all in favor of seeing us promote him.
And the fire commission voted for this promotion unanimously.
Fantastic.
Any questions for Cheryl or Jack?
Just a comment. I think this will be the last time you're coming. That's the wrong year. You've reached the top and we're delighted. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Albie. And I'm very happy to move the request from you, Miss Resources, to move Albie Bassett from probationary status and to approve the promotion from interim chief to chief of the fire department and director of fire services effective March twenty, two thousand twenty-two. I guess we're doing this retroactively.
And I am delighted to second that motion, Albie. Congratulations. This is great. This is great.
So all in favor?
Hi.
Congratulations, Albie. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the vote of confidence and all the support I've gotten in the last six months. So from everybody. Thanks.
Terrific. Now you have the next item on the agenda.
I get to spend more money. So Fire Department is requesting thirty-four thousand for our station learning system, thirty-two thousand four hundred is for the bricks and then additional sixteen hundred for additional CAD monitors in the firehouse, lighting and speakers as needed when they install. Bricks is the basically the tones in the firehouse coming from our combined dispatch center in Fairfield now, or soon to be. We're still out of Westport. When they tone the firehouse out, lights are going to go on. They're going to have ramp up tones, good for the stress levels, the lower stress levels when the the loud noises come in. So it's a more state of the art system than our current Z Tron, which actually is no longer compatible with the new system moving forward. So the request for the thirty-four thousand to start that project, it is funds that have been budgeted in capital over the last, last year's capital budget.
So Albie, these, these tone, this new tone system is more user friendly? Is that what you're saying?
The, the tones themselves, the noise in the light, we currently, we do not have lights that turn on in the firehouse at night. Or during the day, if it's, you know, in certain areas. So the lights do turn on with LED lights turn on with the tones coming in. And the tones, what they say is they ramp up. So they start very quiet and start to slowly get louder instead of the, the currently loud, full noise. Jump out of your chair when the tones go off. If, if they don't give you the warning, yeah, if they don't give you a warning, a call's coming in and then all of a sudden the, the tones come out. And yeah, you're jumping out of your skin when that happens sometimes. So that's the, the new style of tone over the last, you know, maybe decade now that NFPA and Fire Service has been supporting for in-station alerting. This system also has a, the CAD monitors which tie into the software that firefighters, both career and volunteer, use on their phones also. So that's the backup system. That'll take the place of another system that the volunteers are currently paying for. So that's all, it's all going to be tied together. It won't be two independent systems.
So you mentioned that we're moving from Westport to Fairfield in terms of dispatch because I, on my phone, I get all the dispatches is Westport. It's moving to Fairfield?
There are physical locations moving out of the Westport headquarters to Sacred Heart University in a state of the art system, you know, everything that a communication system is supposed to have, multiple dispatchers, call taker dispatchers that are going to do both Fairfield and Westport and New Canaan Fire out of there. So we're going to have a backup people and so on as they rotate through the positions.
That's good.
Thank you, Chief. I just a quick question. So the package itself, the installation, I understand, the package itself is on a two-year contract. So how much of that do you think will be renewed? Is that like a two-year contract of the thirty-two thousand dollars?
The only renewable thing is that yearly service maintenance contract, and that's negotiable with them whether we keep that. But that's their bricks is a proprietary system. So they do have software upgrades that they, they push out. And that's what the twenty-five hundred dollars is for the service agreement. So that would be the only renewable. They do have a warranty on their on their alert package, the actual device that takes in the call. Everything else we could the nice thing about this, it was vetted by a Westport Assistant Chief who's into the communication system. Anything else you want to add to the system, whether lighting or speakers? In theory, we can do it ourselves. So after the initial installation cost, we can add those to the system at minimal cost buying the, the approved product that they can get at Home Depot.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Now, for the questions, I move we approve this request from the Fire Department to enter it to a contract with Brick Station Alerting Systems as described by Albie for a total project cost of thirty-four thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Albie. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good day.
Great day.
Feel better, sir.
Tiger is up. And Tiger, why don't you add the Elm Street bump outs and the sidewalk bricks to your next five, four, five items?
Okay. All right. Good morning.
Morning.
So the first item was, actually, they're all kind of combined into one, as Kevin just mentioned. So we have a a material purchase for granite. And then you added, thankfully, thank you for material purchase for brick and then the actual work for the bump outs on Elm Street. So I'll attack the materials for granite purchase first. We went out, we received two quotes from the two companies that we worked with in the past, William Stone in North Carolina Granite. William Stone came in at eighteen thousand forty-three dollars and twelve cents. This is for granite, for not only the Elm Street bump outs, but also for other projects, sidewalk projects that we have in town. We also provide granite to developers that are developing properties in town so that they'll use the higher end material for us. So we provide the material, they provide the labor. So it's been working out quite well for us. It was instituted with the previous planner, Steve Kleppen, and it's the, the processes work quite well. The interesting note, if you wanted to talk about materials and what's been happening, last year in November, North Carolina Granite was selling us granite at eighteen dollars, nineteen dollars a foot. Now their quotes are twenty-two, twenty, right? William Stone is at twenty-two dollars and ten cents. If you went across the board for both of them, then they were within dollars of each other, except for the fact that North Carolina Granite, in order to get their material here to us, was going to charge us three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars a truckload because it's coming from North Carolina. It's very difficult to get someone to come up here. Whereas last year it was three hundred dollars a truckload. So with that said, we'd like to go forward with the purchase of granite from William Stone at eighteen thousand forty-three dollars and twelve cents. And the monies are currently available on our budget. Do you want me to go to the other two as well and do them all? You want to do individually? Kevin?
Go ahead.
Okay, the, so the next one is purchasing materials for the brick sidewalks themselves, the brick itself. And again, we went to two contractors or two suppliers, Paramount Stone and Homer C. Godfrey. The problem with Homer C. Godfrey is the fact that they weren't, weren't going to be able to deliver the materials to us until July twenty-first was the first date. So four months from now. Whereas Paramount Stone was going to be able to get, get us the first delivery, half of the delivery now and half of the delivery in a little bit. And we need basically half the material now. We have some in stock and then we can replenish what we have and then provide the rest of the, to the other builders in town. So we'd like to go forward with the purchase of stone, brick from Paramount Stone for fourteen thousand six eighty-four sixteen. Their price from last year is slightly elevated, not, not the, not the, what we saw from the granite, but slightly elevated from last year was just around five dollars a square foot. Now we're at five point seven four cents per square foot. So it's up a little bit from last year, but nothing out of the ordinary. And then the last one on this to bring it together is that we went out, received a quote from Peter Lonnie Associates to put in the bump outs on Elm Street, just on the northern side. It's about two hundred and seventy feet long. It'll be granite, the entire purchase away with brick inlay. They were part of a low bid for our paving twenty-twenty contract where we had sidewalks installed in there, granite and brick sidewalks installed in there. They were the low bid price at that point in time, and they said they would hold their price from twenty-twenty going forward. So we feel that they're the, the best contractor to do this work, given the sensitivity of the area, the fact that they're flexible and can work around the restaurants and the other merchants that are in the area. And we'd like to go forward with that work. That's a, that price was at fifty-two thousand twenty dollars. We put a fifteen percent contingency of seven thousand eight hundred on it for a total of fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars.
And does that include the materials?
No, the, the materials are supplied by us. That's, that's standard.
Right, okay.
Well, the question. Breaking granite, the brick and granite that we just requested will be part of this project.
And the, and the existing curbing is going to remain where it is. We're going to bump out and put an additional additional granite curbing at the edge.
Correct. Yeah, the, to try to take the existing granite out would be a very problematic and very disruptive. So the feeling is we'll leave it in place and then build out from there. Use that as a shelf to build out from there for the, for the remaining work.
But the bump out itself would be level.
Level, correct. It'll just be like the sidewalk just got extended out. It'll just have a piece of granite in the middle of it.
Tiger, can you give us a background of the need for this, the connection to outdoor dining? How many spots are we going to lose parking wise, et cetera, et cetera?
Sure. The, so this went to the Police Commission for Approval last year. We had Planet Conservation Development eight S twenty-four review by, by planning and zoning last year. So this is in conjunction with trying to increase pedestrian safety in the area, shorten the, the travel distances across the street, specifically in front of the Playhouse and at South Avenue where we've got a kind of a crossing there, a little bit of a difficult intersection with a lot of pedestrian traffic. So this will bring out the, the sidewalk eight feet. So it'll be the parallel parking lane will be removed in this location from South Avenue to the Playhouse. What we have in that area as well is we have a lot of people parking in those spots. Once we striped them with hash marks, because we can't be within twenty-five feet of a crosswalk by state law, we striped them with hash marks, but we're still getting people parking in there. And now they're actually parking over the top of the crosswalk, blocking the pedestrian ramps. We're getting a lot of abuse in the area and a lot of difficulty trying to manage it. So the feeling is that if we just hardpanned it, we necessarily all those, those problems and those issues. And then the subsequent part of that is that we reduce the pedestrian crossing distance, which increases safety, reduce speeds probably a little bit. Speeds are quite low already on Elm Street. And then we get the added benefit of allowing additional space for outdoor dining, which has been a success since we did Forest Street back in oh seven, oh eight.
How, how big is the bump out?
Eight feet wide.
But how, how long?
Two hundred and seventy feet.
How long?
Two hundred and seventy feet.
Okay.
So from basically.
That's a big bump out.
Right, from the, from the, from the intersection of South Avenue to just west of the Playhouse.
And that will preclude the need for?
Barriers?
Barriers.
Yes, the barriers were basically a test, thank you, of the area. So that area that we had removed from parking or from the, from the right of way line with the barricades, the barricade, we placed the barricade, the outside of the barricade at that eight foot.
The beautiful plastic barricades, right?
Beautiful plastic barricades, yes. Water filled.
So this will essentially replace the bump out, two hundred and seventy foot long pump out will replace.
Correct, right. And it'll bring us in line with the new state law, which requires that the pedestrian way be on the sidewalk versus we were having the pedestrian way travel into the right of way. So there's a new state law that came into effect last year. It says that the pedestrian has to remain on the sidewalk. So you can't take someone off.
So what about restaurants east of?
At that point in time, we, we wanted to see if there was a, if this was successful. And then at that point in time, we could look at restaurants east and west of this area. So I know that there's a request for the restaurants or the establishments east of the area. West of the area seems to be doing well without it, but necessarily they might ask for that as well. But we wanted to see exactly how this would go. And then at that point in time, there's a commensurate drop in parking spaces as well that we would, every time we institute a bump out, we would be losing one or two spaces at that time.
Yeah, on the north side of Elm Street, pretty much, you could, you know, you could take away all spots.
The original proposal was to do exactly that, take away the entire parking lane and just bump out the sidewalk by eight feet. We narrowed it down to, to this area to try to stay specifically in what we consider our pedestrian safety area.
Right.
You know, and not necessarily an initiative for, for our outdoor dining that.
So there has been a request from restaurants?
Not specifically, not specifically to, to me, but through others to me. Yes, we've heard that they would like to have that, but that would have to go back to the Police Commission for Review. And, and then further analysis to determine whether or not we would do anything further.
Right.
So Tiger, if you can, so you, you supplied us with the, the sort of aerial view here. If I, as I look at this, so the the crosswalk that comes from the eastern side of South Avenue going over towards the Playhouse, it looks like the bump out continues a little bit more to the east. Is that right? Or is that?
So.
In front of Albon Pan?
On the, on the, are you talking in front of Le Pen?
Le Pen, yeah.
And yeah, so the, the bump out will go from the Playhouse, past Le Pen, past Elm, and then I, the retail establishments, I don't have.
Okay, so it actually goes to the east of where South Avenue is, right?
Just east of the South Avenue entrance. Yeah, because we, at that point in time, we had twenty-five feet that we had to provide of a no parking area because of the crosswalks. So we're taking in that, that twenty-five feet.
Okay, I see that. Okay, great. And then how many parking places did you say that takes away?
At present, it was five.
Five.
Right. We have a, we have a second phase that we, that we'd like to implement, which is actually on the southern side, whereby there are actually larger bulb outs. We want to see exactly how this, this works. And we don't want to disrupt the the area too much with construction, but the bulb outs on the, on the other side will help us enhance the, the, not only the pedestrian safety, will enhance ADA accessibility and then give us back the five that we were losing. So it's a kind of a twofold process to take care of one side, then we'll take care of the other side.
How does it give it back? Isn't it taking?
Once we take away a couple, once we hardpan it, we can actually move closer to the crosswalk because you can't drive.
I see.
You know, at that point in time, right? Can't drive over the curb to get to it, right? So we can actually start to maximize the space that we're having in the areas. So we, so based upon the, you know, the Maria did a very nice job on the analysis, looking at that, we actually gained the fight back that we lose across the street.
And what's the timing on that?
Hopefully, once we put this in, then we'll come back again. Later, we'll get, we'll refresh the quotes in this area and then come forward with that. So I would hope to say that that might be midsummer. You know, to come back and do that. I just want to see exactly how this plays out, see how everyone is, how it's working before we decide to actually extend out into the right of way with the bulb out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. See frozen? Oh, can't hear. Kevin?
You're on mute, Kev.
I was saying, no further questions. Let's move on these three items together. As Tiger described, the materials for the granite and the brick and then the and then the Puglani contract for the work to be done on the bump outs. I move we approve all three.
Second.
Further discussion?
On here.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Tiger.
Thank you. Right. Actually, I have a localized repairs is next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Number six.
The, so this is a, an extension of a contract that we've had in place for a number of years with New England paving. We typically do this in two phases, phase one, phase two, at a hundred thousand dollars each. New England paving has been doing excellent work for us since two thousand and eight. We went into this time and material contract with them since two thousand and eleven, and it's worked out quite well for us. We do an analysis every year as to how much work they're able to accomplish, how much it's costing us on a time and material basis, and then break that back down into a square foot basis to see whether or not we're still in line with other bids that are out in the area, other towns, and other work that we're doing. And each year comes in that this is probably the best way to do it because we can, you can go attack an area, if he goes and attacks an area and then gets delayed somewhere else, he can go somewhere else and work and then come back and work for us on a time material versus having remobilization charges or problems with downtime, things of that nature. And as long as we continue to provide him with work areas, the workflow is quite well, quite smoothly and quite efficiently. So therefore it keeps our costs down. Not to mention the fact that he's probably the best contractor we've seen to do this type of work anywhere in the region. Other contractors that we've asked, when we say we want to do this work, they say, why don't you just hire New England pavement because they're better? So the feeling, and I think Moses here too, I think you can speak to it as well, that, that it's been a, it's been a program that we've had in place for a number of years and it works out exceptionally well for us. For anything from curb repair, driveway repair, localized repairs, trench repair, anything that we have larger areas that, that are in that don't get to the point where you would pave, but you would need to repair because we're going to come in and put a micro thin overlay on it or a gate seal, things of that nature. We're, we're having distresses in a, in a local or small area pavement, we have them come in, take care of it, and then we're able to pave over the top of it. And I, we did a test drive a number of years ago whereby I closed my eyes on Silver Mine Road and we drove Silver Mine Road and I couldn't tell where the patches were and the road was for the entire distance. And he had probably done twelve or thirteen patches, large scale patches on Silver Mine and couldn't tell the difference between the two. So, and that's exactly what we want is that when, when we repair a utility trench, we repair an area that the phone call dies, right? The phone call stops because that's what's generating the phone calls, that resident driving over two, three times a day, the bump, the bump, the bump. And then all of a sudden we get rid of it and then the phone call goes away and rider satisfaction goes up, user satisfaction goes up, and that's exactly what we want.
So this is in the PMP budget?
Yes, it is. Yeah. It's a, it's a part of that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have every year. That's part of it. So we'd like to continue with this contract, you know, this phase and we'll, we'll most likely come back for the second phase sometime in the June, July range for the second half of the year.
While we're at it?
Sure.
Can you talk about paving downtown?
Sure. So the.
It's, it's now spring, so.
It's now spring. They're, they're working, Aquarian and EverSource are working through their permits to come and do the downtown area. So the moment that they're able to then come and do that, they'll take care of that stretch of Cherry Street, which is one twenty-four and Main Street, which is one twenty-four. So they'll take care of those two pieces. And then once the asphalt plants open and everyone's rolling and work, the weather cooperates a little bit. We try to get a little bit more of the moisture out of the ground. Our contractors will go in and do Brinkerhoff, Mortimer and Lockwood. We have a bid out right now for our work, our paving work that'll come back in on Thursday, next Thursday. So, and then at that point in time, that'll take care of, out of our lowest twenty roads, ten of the twenty roads will be done, or ten of the twenty road sections will be done. The other ten actually have a, to be have either another project on top of it, like a water main going in or gas main going in, or they'll be later on in the season in that case. So we'll be taking care of the bottom twenty segments of our road network this year done. So we'll be actually complete with our entire program a year or so in advance of where we thought we would be. If EverSource hadn't come in, we probably would have been two or three years in advance, but it's fine. We're still ahead of the game. And then lastly, once we see what the numbers come in for our paving, then I can estimate what's going to happen for EverSource. And then we're in a bid out EverSource's work. And that'll be for everything from, in essence, if you're looking at the areas that are bounded, Farm Road, Main Street, Park Street are three barriers. And then Oak Street being at the north, so your east, southwest and north barriers, South Avenue being in the middle, anything on either side will be taken care of in that stretch on, on EverSource's dime at that point. So every road from Farm Road to Oak Street between Maine and Park be taken care of this year is that's our plan. At that point in time, then we have a little bit to go from Oak to Cherry and a couple, and then Park Street itself at that point in time. And that's, that's slated for next year to try to give them that one extra year for people to, to join up and sign on. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Tiger, actually, would you clarify Park Street? Because we're, we're going to, we're going to do the sidewalks and the Park Street with the state grant?
The sidewalks are with a state grant, correct. The paving itself is on EverSource's dime. There was a twenty nineteen road, theoretically. It was nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. We give them the twenty-two year because of COVID, it'd be twenty-three. But if we can see that we're, if, if the majority of people, the saturation rate is high, the majority of people signed on, then we can necessarily piggyback that on the existing contract and have Park Street done prior.
So it's conceivable we can do Park Street by the fall?
It is, correct.
Yeah, that would be very desirable to get.
It would be helpful because then we would have Main Street and Park Street done and both sides. And then South Avenue was done. So all three arteries would be, would be taken care of.
So we should put an emphasis like we have in other roads to encourage people to hook up and like, like you do with Main Street.
Mm-hmm. We can do that. I can, like, we can either go knock on doors or we can, you know, notify the residents that we'd like them to sign up earlier rather than later.
And then has the state indicated when they're going to pay one twenty-three, one twenty-four?
No, that, that, the, the vendor in place program that they have, that the state has, no, they haven't given us a, a schedule. So the state is also coming in and taking care of stretches of one twenty-three. Basically, from one oh six to the town line on, on one twenty-three, one twenty-four, the upper stretches of one twenty-four to the town line, and then one oh six, there's some stretches as well. So they're doing about seven miles of road paving in town this year as well. So there's a, there'll be a lot of material going down this year in town. So it should be, it should be a good year for us in that regard.
You say one twenty-three north to the town?
One twenty-three north to the town line, yeah. One twenty-four north to the town line, just out of town, north to the town line, and then one oh six, there's a stretch heading out of town towards, towards the east that they're taking care of. They've already done on one oh six, they've already done the southern sections in one twenty-three and one twenty-four. They've done the southern sections. Now it's the northern section will be pretty much complete.
And how much is the cost of asphalt being affected by the?
We, I don't have a, I don't have a bid number yet. I'm waiting. That's the, that's the anticipatory number right now. We anticipate, we know it's going to go up. We just don't know to what extent. So when the numbers come back in later on, we'll, we'll know exactly what's happening. So that's, we're keeping our fingers crossed for Thursday.
Good. All right. If there's no further questions, I move we approve the paved two thousand twenty-two localized repairs project for a hundred thousand dollars as you described.
Second here.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have tree work.
Oh, we have tree work. The, we sent this bid out, our March seventeen bid to all seven contractors that we normally send it to. Unfortunately, we only received one price back from Homestead Tree Care. They predominantly win the majority of our bids. They responded back with, according to Bob Peran, our tree warden, a very favorable bid. It's for eight separate sections or separate locations in town. It's for eight separate sections or separate locations in town. We have a couple of projects whereby we're taking down some trees for other projects, the, the work at the service area that we're, we're taking that the conservancy and the town are, are working on together. There are three older trees being removed in that area and that entire area will be replanted. And then for some work at Center School to redo the driveway, the entrance off of South Avenue, there are a couple of trees there. So there's a couple of projects that we're working that some of the trees have to come down for that, but the majority are diseased and dying trees that need to come down.
Any questions about this?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't say the number eight, Homestead Tree and Shrub Care for eighteen thousand six hundred and twenty dollars.
I move, we approve the request from the tree warden to enter to a contract with Elms to tree shrub for eighteen thousand six twenty for tree removal and pruning as described in the memo. As described by Tiger. Second?
A second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Tiger.
You.
That brings us to annual fee review, which we've deferred a couple of times. And in particular, there's another memo which is on your desk now because the Parks and Recreation Commission had, had approved this, recommended this last week at their meeting on the Wavine House.
It's now on your desk.
Oh, okay.
That's now on their tables.
Yeah. So first of all, I'd like to make a comment, overall comment on the fee memos. I think next year, we're going to try to get these memos into us by October, November, so that we can look at them with more diligence in the budget process. Budget process gets very busy in December, January for us. And if we're going to make any changes, we probably ought to go into budget seizing in early December with these memos. So as you see from all of the other memos, no recommendations for, for fee changes are being made. And I'm also going to encourage Ian to try to standardize these formats so we can kind of have an ongoing fee document that we can see the history and so that we don't go five years in the case of waving house without increasing fees. So I just want to mention that. And secondly, so the one area we're making a recommendation or partial recommended, but it really came off of the study that we saw back in January from case study brands to upgrade Wavine House and to justify the major capital repairs we still have to do for ADA work on the second floor, et cetera. And we haven't increased the wave any house fees. Actually, John, do you want to come to the table? Tiger's already there because Tiger can address the capital projects, which, you know, you're aware of. But the idea is, you know, we probably should be increasing fees every two or three years at least and not waiting five years. Is John there?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay. So John, you want to describe what, what was recommended to Parks and Rec? I watched the, the meeting last night.
Okay.
But I, why don't you describe to Nick and Kathleen what Parks and Rec considered and recommended?
Right. Well, first of all, as you said, through the case study brands raising the fees up some, they, they've been substantially low for a number of years. And we don't think that many people go pick Wavine House because of the fee. They pick it more because that's where they want to have their event. So with that said, Park and Rec made some minor changes. B was, B found what Steve was, what he was going to be proposing. And it's very close to these numbers, just little small changes there. But mainly it's more in keeping with some of the other places that have a similar venue and around here. So
Could you just walk us through the, so that we're we're making a jump?
Making it. Yeah, making almost, you're almost doubling a lot of the numbers. So on your sheet, you can see the current pricing in the left-hand column and then the proposed pricing. There is still different days of the week and different times of the year when it's, when it's most popular. So, but most of them go up almost, almost double. So.
And that's largely because, that's largely because of five years before we, since we've increased fees. But also, you know, we've already made, I'd add up two million dollars for a roof and another million and a half to the first floor ADA compliance and, you know, we we're making major capital investments in Wavine House to maintain the hundred and five-year-old building. So.
Well, and also care the conservancy, you know, outdoors.
Yeah, the conservancy plus the fact, you know, we are also so we're looking to upgrade the wedding experience as, as the case study brands recommended, you know, we, we we, we need to try to get it perceptively out of the rec department and more of a wave any house wedding venue experience.
Yes.
And that could involve, you know, a website that sells it more. We do nothing to market Wavine House and yet we still have consistent demand for weddings, fifty, sixty weddings a year. And so we're, we're looking to upgrade the experience and that also may make sure that the house is always in top knot condition. That's why we hired the part-time gardener to, to help around making sure the grounds are always maintained throughout the season. And so the whole point is to upgrade the experience. So when people have a wedding, they're proud of the, the experience and pleased with the experience. And we should be able to probably double our, our revenues, which significantly will offset the cost of these capital improvements. The bond, bond payments will make over twenty years to keep the house tip-top shape. So.
But, but to be clear, these increases, John, are with respect to, you know, Wavine House as it is today in comparison to competition.
Correct.
If you will, and, and we've, and we've been underpricing Wavine for
For years. And as improvements are made, I definitely see more increases coming. But, you know, it's not a matter of, you know, you can't instantly go to your top level rate. I think you'd start pushing people away. So.
So would you say that this is sort of in the median range of comparable wedding venues?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. And what, just can you remind us, what is the overall revenue then in total would we expect from?
I can't tell.
Weddings.
I can get back to you, but I really just.
How many weddings?
It's like, there's like fifty weddings, I believe, a year.
Fifty a year?
You know, some weekends there'll be three all back booked up together.
Yeah, we have all that information. If Tucker was here, you know, we, we did all that study.
Yeah.
Together with the case study brand, we had a team of Alan Smith and Christine Sullivan from the SBA. We, so we modeled a, a future business plan with, with improved facilities, improved condition of facilities. And so again, I think, you know, I would ballpark, right now we have a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year and we ought to be trying, trying to go to three hundred thousand dollars a year plus for wedding revenues. We probably will, will probably, there may be, and by the way, these will be effective for, people book weddings out as far as two years, I guess, so that people who already have booked their weddings for twenty-two and twenty-three will pay the rates they were contracted for, but these will go into effect as soon as we approve them for, I guess, April first. And then, and then as we upgrade the experience further, maybe perhaps two years from now, we'll look to get to a market rate for a comparable first-class venue. If you look at some of the other venues, I mean, they're, they're Wavine House is inherently beautiful. It has to be absolutely beautiful and in, in great shape at all times for, for weddings for people that want to pay considerable amount of money for. So.
Yeah. And one other question, as I seem to recall, was there ever a restriction or maybe there still is a restriction on the outdoor terrace in terms of having a tent or?
Yes. Part, part of the problem is there, there's been one wedding that came up that they wanted a tent.
Right.
And it happened to see the one we had up, you know, a short time ago. Part of the issue is the turnover time. You know, you, it might get to the point where yes, you can allow tents on the terrace, but you're going to have to book the place for three days worth, the day to put it up and the day to take it down. Because trying to take a tent down on the same day you're setting up for another wedding is, is pretty much impossible guaranteeing it. So that's part of the issue. So right now, no tents.
Prohibited. Right.
Yeah. But we're, we're looking into it, seeing how we can make it work.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I just had one other question, Kevin. I, I thought there was a change on the was it for the planning and zoning? There was a change to the, the way residential new construction is looked at as, and they're doing it by size.
Yeah, that's, well, there's two, there's actually two in land use, there's two changes. So the building department was proposing a change in valuation.
Right.
Which the, the chief building official, Brian's ill today, so he couldn't make it, but the, where, whereby he can change the valuation and that, that he's proposing to do that. So that would, that there's a slight change there, but he has that based upon the residential building code. The final building permit valuation shall be set by the building official, but he's asking for it to be formalized here. And then you're correct, Lynn is on the call. She has a proposed change due to a new state law that went into effect to try to do exactly that.
Yeah.
Normalize it between residential and commercial construction whereby if you have a smaller home being built, it costs you X amount of dollars, but it costs it, but if you're having a larger home being built, it costs us a lot more money to try to go in, in to provide for the permit and the inspections. And that's similar to what it'd be on a, on a commercial side, right? So trying to bring those values side by side. So I don't, Lynn, I don't know if you have anything to add? She's still on the call. The, that's basically it.
Makes sense.
I'm sorry, I just, I just missed what you said because I was actually helping someone. So repeat what you asked me.
Basically asking for that change now for the residential new construction to try to tie it in line with the commercial based upon size. So those, those changes that you made for anything under a size, certain size house to an oversized house.
So, yeah, so last year in the state legislature, they passed PA Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine, which essentially required that we can't charge a different fee for residential buildings. We have to treat all residential buildings the same, like we can't treat multifamily different than single family. So we aligned our residential fees with how we charge our commercial fees and we did it by square feet. So all residential structures, no matter what their size. If it's a fifteen hundred two-family house or a fifteen hundred one-family house, it's pay the same fee. It's all based on square footage. So we just aligned it with the commercial, the structure we already had in place for commercial permits.
So the red, the red ink in, in your memo is the change?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. And then I'm not clear exactly where Brian's change is, Tiger.
Brian's change is more
Valuation.
In valuation, right? So if you had a, currently if you had a thousand square foot addition being installed, the at a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar valuation. Brian's proposing that that valuation be increased to a hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot. So the valuation would go up. At that point in time, if you look at from that thousand square foot addition, right now would have a total permit fee of one thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars with the increased valuation. While it increases the overall valuation, the permit fee only goes up slightly to one thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars or approximately about two hundred and fifty dollars. So you're looking at that change across the board. And he hasn't done this in quite some time. So that the feeling is that he wants to try to stay exactly what is actually out there as far as how much it's costing to build. So therefore you increase your valuation based upon how much it's costing to build. And then that's reflected back into your permit fee.
Okay, so the, the tool and use fees, we will approve the increases. And and then the Wavine House fees is, as recommended by Parks and Recreation, if we were other than that, as I said, next year, you know, these memos are dated February and stuff, well beyond the point where we could have made changes for budget purposes. So we haven't not that these fees are giving me budget items, but next year by October, November, I'd like to have the fee memo so we can see whether we ought to make changes for budget purposes, especially if we have an increased fees in some areas by two or three years. That being said, all I'm saying is, so I would move that we approve the land use fees as described for building apartment and planning and zoning. And also the Wavine House fees as John had described and will put in the minutes, the appropriate language as to what we've approved here.
Second error.
Further discussion? All in favor? Thank you, John and Lynn and Tiger.
All right. Thank you.
With that, we turn to tax over payments. Questions about the tax over payments?
Done.
Tumbling, totaling thirty-two thousand one eighty-three fifty-seven for motor vehicles and real estate. Do we move, do we approve these?
Yes.
Yes. I move, we approve the tax over payments on our tablets. Second. Kathleen seconds. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Contracts on our tablets. Any questions about those?
Just, just a quick one actually for Tiger, if you have a second. I'm, I'm sorry, on, on the removal of fencing and posts in the Wavine Park Trail, can just, where is that located? And are they, is it going to be replaced?
It's no.
Okay.
The, this is actually a legacy fence that was installed back prior to zoning the property. And it's the, along the Merritt Parkway, there's a fence line that's been there for sixty-plus years. Every storm, a tree falls on it, knocks it down, it's rusted, it's, and it's unsightly. So the conservancy is looking at doing something for sound and site mitigation through that area. And we're trying to determine whether or not install a berm plant or have you. So our feeling was, let's see exactly how much money it would cost us just to remove the fence and, and visually, you know, enhance the area, right? So remove the fence, remove some of the, some of the downed brush in the area. So we hired Joe Hussey for two days, sort of as a pilot program to see exactly how far he could get. So he's starting at the entrance to the Wavine Trail system off of Lapham Road, right by the bridge. And he's heading basically eastward from there up and over and then see exactly what he can do in two days worth of work. And at that point in time, we'll go back to the conservancy and see if they want to partner with us and continue that process and thereby removing the fence line. We are pretty much the only property along the merit that I have seen that has a fence that doesn't have a pool. The majority of people who are, have a pool, have a fence, and that's the reason why they have the fence.
Is it chain link?
Chain link. Yeah. Yeah, the, right. From what I understand, the, the original owner of the Laphams put it up because people were starting to park on the parkway. And then walking into Wavine proper utilizing his land. He said, no. So he put a fence up to delineate. And the fence over time, you know, it's very difficult to maintain and every storm, a tree falls on some section and knocks it down. So we're, we're taking, we're, we're moving similar to what we did back on South Avenue. Two thousand and six, seven, we took down that entire fence line along South Avenue. Some people don't even remember that there was a fence line there. We took down that and there was an instant, you know, kudos for that where people said, well, the sightline is much nicer now without that fence. So the exact same thing.
So a berm is under consideration?
There, it's under consideration, yeah, or planting either on our side of the line or on the, on the Merritt Parkway side of line. We're trying to set up a meeting between the Wavine Park Conservancy and the Merritt Parkway Conservancy to determine whether or not there's some synergy there.
So is the Merritt Park Conservancy the owner of that property or?
No, no, we, we own ours and then, and then the state.
State owners, right.
But they, the conservancy has a, has a, a extreme vested interest in what, how it appears. So we'd like to meet with, we're trying to meet with the, the Merritt Parkway Conservancy to see if there's, like I said, a synergy between the two and can we plant? And on the Merritt Parkway side, on the state right away side, it's much easier to plant on that side than it is on ours. Plant on that side and then get the sound mitigation, the site mitigation for both sides, right? So you get the Merritt Parkway, gets a nice better view of more trees and then we don't necessarily look at the traffic on the parkway.
So how much, how much authority does the Merritt Parkway Conservancy have?
They're, they're an advisory group.
Right.
Solely, but, but they, the, but the DOT for other projects has said you need to go and get approval by the conservancy or, you know, at least acceptance by the conservancy. So we're starting with the conservancy first before we go to the DOT. And then have a united front going to the DOT saying this is what we would like to accomplish and can we accomplish it on your property? Where can we accomplish it easier and less, you know, less costly? Our side, we have to build the berm in order to plant. Their side already has a berm. We could necessarily plant it on the top of the ridge line, on the top of the slope there and the tree necessarily wouldn't, if it fell, wouldn't affect the parkway since they've been removing a lot of trees along that area, but it would still satisfy both situations, the sound and the site mitigation for both properties. It would still satisfy both situations, the sound and the site mitigation for both properties. You know, for both both sides of that that property line.
Thank you.
That's it. It's just really a test case to come in and take out some, see exactly what it looks like, see how much we can get accomplished in two days and then and then go from there. But if he I would suggest you, I walked it yesterday. There's a market improvement from the one to the other and we'll take pictures and then show you exactly before and after. So you can see exactly what what type of work it entailed.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiger.
Thank you.
And nothing further on contracts? Legal fees? On our tablets. You see the adjustment for the two twenty oh capital costs have been taken out. That brings us to selectmen comments and I really don't have much to comment. I would note that we continue to do our three-day week. ECR testing. And health department has rapid tests for COVID. And. Jen continues to work on vaccination clinics and booster clinics as as needed. There's rumors of a fourth. I guess you call a second booster. Fourth shot coming possibly. So. And I would note that I unfortunately succumbed to COVID last week while I was on vacation and. At the tail end of my. Getting over that as as well as my wife. So. Anyway. Vaccinations work in my view. So I encourage people to get their vaccinations and get their booster shots. Other than that, I have no further comments, I think.
Really sorry to hear that and I hope you're feeling better, both of you. But actually, can you just go back and make a motion to approve the legal fees?
Thank you. Well, do we? I guess. What did I do there? Motion to approve the legal fees. I move we approve the legal fees on our tablets.
Now second.
Second, Kathleen seconds for the discussion. All in favor? Aye.
It's always important to pay your lawyers.
Any comments?
I just had one on the Divine Cottage and Tiger, I'm sorry, we about, I guess, two meetings ago. We'd asked for bids and you said you're going to come back to us with bids for painting the Vine Cottage. I know this has been something I've been asking for for quite some time. Where do we stand on that? When do we expect them?
Very shortly.
Next meeting?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Looking forward to that.
I just I just don't remember the bid date off the top of my head, but it's it'll be within that timeframe.
Okay.
Anything further?
Nothing on my end.
I move we adjourn at nine twenty-five. And by the way, Pam, we didn't get any comments from the public, my email, I gather, so. Move we adjourn at nine twenty-five AM.
Second here.
All right. Have a great day, everyone.
You too. Feel better.
Feel better.